I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. I might notice here we're a little shorthanded on this side of the table. Councilman Stikes is in Richmond where the Christiansburg High School basketball team is in the quarterfinals, is that what they call it?
The semifinals.
Is that going on right this minute?
Quarterfinals for the state championship. So, he sent me a very humorous email today, told him to be fine. And, but God, I don't blame him, I would've been there too. You have copy of the minutes of the last meeting? Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mayor's public.
We're gonna do the public hearing. We're gonna do the public hearing, but I'm gonna get the minutes approved first.
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Second, discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I do that for a reason, because there's been a couple occasions where I have forgotten to approve the minutes. Now let's go back and look at the public hearing. To proposed ordinance amendment to chapter 30 zoning of the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to provisions for residential density allowances in the residential business and mixed-use districts. We do not have a recommendation from the Planning Commission, they are continuing to study it, but we're gonna do the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the proposed ordinance? Does everybody understand what the proposed ordinance is all about? That's what I figured. Anyway, we'll be bringing this back with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. So, I will close this public hearing and we'll move on to the citizen hearing portion. The strategic communications plan by our Public Information Officer, Becky Wilburn, you have a copy of that that was presented to you last week. And, Ms. Wilburn, you're on.
Give it just a second from the left. Alright, well, I'm pleased to be here tonight to speak to you for just a few minutes about the strategic communications plan, which hopefully all of you had an opportunity to read over the past couple of weeks. Before we dive into it though, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an introduction, a little bit of background. Coming up, in the beginning of April marks the two-year anniversary of the creation of the Public Relations Office and the hiring of the town's first Public Relations Officer, a position that I've held since its creation. And, the purpose of the department is really to proactively provide citizens, members of the media, employees, and other audiences accurate and timely information regarding upcoming events, announcements, services, policies, and project plans that may be of interest or have an effect on these stakeholders. And, really in short, that means that it's the department's job to let everyone know what's going on. And, while I believe that great strides have been made over the past two years, the goal of the strategic communications plan is to really take it to the next level and continue to improve interaction between the town and its various stakeholders. And, the plan really does this by examining who we're trying to reach, how we go about reaching them via current communication methods, as well as examines areas to consider in the future as we move forward and continue to try to improve. And, the intent of all of these efforts is really to raise the town's community profile through improved communications, streamlined access to information, increased positive media coverage, and contact with citizens, business owners, and other key constituents. So, the plan identifies five guiding principles that are really the words that we live by in everything that we do communication-wise. And, they include being proactive instead of reactive, that perception is reality, that we must tell our own story, that two-way communication and collaboration are priorities, and that communication is everyone's job. Combine all these together and it means that it's the town's job to proactively tell our own story through two-way communication that promotes timeliness and accessibility in order to ensure an accurate reflection of our actions. Some of those target populations that we're trying to reach through this plan include both primary and secondary audiences. Primary audiences include our residents, our businesses, employees, our town council, as well as the news media. While the secondary audiences that are still important, but maybe just a little bit down on the list include our students, our neighbors, visitors, potential residents, as well as businesses, and of course those visitors and potential businesses, those are handled by the Tourism Initiative that we have underway, as well as the Montgomery County Economic Development Office. So, there are other people helping to look out for those audiences. So, what are we doing to reach them presently? Well, we've got a few things. We've got our website that we have continued to try to expand and improve as we go along, as well as the notify-me function as a part of that website, which allows subscribers to select any of ten different areas to sign up for, to receive email notifications or text message notifications when changes or additions have been made to those sections. And subscribers can manage those connections on their own. The town also created a Facebook page, which has been very successful. As of last night, we have eight hundred ninety-four fans and we continue to grow. And, what has been particularly rewarding about the Facebook page is that we've seen a lot of people who were not really accustomed to hearing from, use it as a means to reach out, ask questions, even complain if they have an issue about something, seek clarification, and it allows us to have that immediate interaction with them, to provide the information that they're looking for, as well as put that in a public forum that others can see how we were handling that inquiry. We also send out a wide variety of press releases, as well as grant news media interviews, and those range from anything from the Police Department to the Public Works Department. We've also held a number of public information meetings, as well as special events, and the Miller &amp; Allegheny Street Project is a good example of a public information meeting that was held to provide the community with an opportunity to come see what we're doing, what we're planning, and to have their questions answered one-on-one with the people who've helped design that project and really know the ins and the outs of it better than anyone else could really speak about it. Special event that we've got coming up is ribbon-cutting for the new project at the wastewater treatment plant that involves turning the gas into energy down there, that'll be coming up in the next few weeks. We also try to utilize our utility bills as much as possible. There's a very small thirty-two character by four-line section that if we have a brief little blurb, that we can use that space for free. Otherwise, we also have the opportunity to have an insert in the utility bill that gets in front of ninety-four hundred households in the town. So, it's a very cost-effective means to convey information directly to our citizens. We've also utilized surveys, including for the priority-based budgeting process and the comprehensive plan update, and look to expand in that area in the future. Flyers and brochures, we're updating present brochures, we're creating new brochures and flyers as a way to cohesively put together information that people can take with them and have for future reference. Emergency notification system is another area that allows us to get in touch with our citizens. If you have a home phone number, you're likely already in the system, otherwise you can sign up with a cellphone number and the system will give you a call if there's ever an emergency that you need to be made aware of. We've been taking our town council meetings for about fourteen months now, fifteen months, and have been successful in that area with providing people and other whites who have access to these meetings. And, of course, we have a variety of speaking engagements in the community that a number of town staff are involved in, talking about projects, initiatives, to again, speak one-on-one with our citizens to help make them aware and have the opportunity to have their questions answered face-to-face. Last year, Montgomery County and the town of Christiansburg launched the Citizens Academy, which was a joint effort. We had twenty graduates and had a, I think, a ninety-two percent highly recommended rate, and the other eight percent just said that they were likely to recommend the program to others. The success of that program was so profound that we're looking to expand it to nine weeks this year, as well as make the sessions even longer so that we can provide more information to people because they were very responsive and liked the opportunity to interact with various departments on a weekly basis. Direct communication can take many forms. It can be anything from a phone call to helping to deliver the door hangers if there's going to be a utility interruption, making sure that that's professional and cohesive in the message that we're sending out. And, of course, the internal communication with our employees is an ongoing issue that we try to address. So, what can we do to make it even better? The action plan is really looking at the next twelve months. We're looking to refine, we're looking to expand, we're looking to take on some new things. And, budget contingent, we're gonna be looking to revamp the website. And, it's about forty years old, and in the world of the internet, that's pretty old. So, we're looking to find ways to make that information even more accessible because there is so much of it on the website at this time, and of course, continue to improve that content. We're also looking to put tangible numbers behind how much we're trying to grow Facebook, how many status updates we post on Facebook on a weekly basis, as well as how many press releases are put out on a monthly basis. And, a big drive behind those press releases is very proactively looking for positive news that our town departments are doing, programs and services that maybe they've been doing but haven't ever really been highlighted, to let people know what's going on and to understand. We also want to make sure that our staff is always prepared, that they've got the information that they need, and that we're communicating with them regularly so that if they get stopped on the street, or if the news media shows up asking them questions, that they're comfortable answering those questions. We're also gonna look to hold at least three public information sessions annually. There's a large initiative that's going on, if there's a major project that's underway, we'll likely easily surpass that. But, certainly if there are projects like that going on, I think that it's reasonable to make public information sessions just a regular part of how we go about informing the public. We're also gonna make sure that we maximize our utility bills, have inserts, if it makes sense to have an insert every time there's a utility bill, making sure that we're looking at that little free space and what's the absolute best use of that space, to try to plan ahead what's going on over the next two months that we can utilize that space for. And, an area that I think that we can certainly improve on is coordinating the information with the schools. It's an area that honestly, we haven't done too much with. But, if there's a project, or a program, or an event that citizens that are ages K through twelve might benefit from, then let's let them know, and let's make sure that we can try to get them involved directly through the schools and sending that information home with parents. And, overall, we're just gonna look to make town hall more approachable, really as approachable as possible, make every interaction a positive one. So, what about the future? As we move past the action plan stage, there's a few areas that we want to keep in mind as we consider where to go from here. And, the largest part of that is making sure that we're filling in the gaps before we redouble our efforts in another area. What I mean by that is if there is members of our community that we aren't communicating with as effectively as possible, let's make sure that we're finding a way to reach them before we reach out to people that we may already be getting through Facebook or through the newspaper articles. But, all in all, we want to make sure that we're continuing to find new and improved ways to reach our audiences. It's a fast-paced, ever-changing world, and we need to make sure that we're giving the information where people want to see it, how they want to see it, so always keeping an eye on what's next. But, above all, we need to make sure that we're balancing our available resources. There's only so many hours in the day, there's only so many dollars in the budget, so let's make sure that we are being the most effective and efficient with our use of these resources. So, that's kind of the broad overview of the very detailed information that you have in front of you. There's my contact information. If anybody in the audience has any questions, by all means, feel free to ask me, get in touch with me either of those ways. Otherwise, if council has any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
Just got a couple. On what we're currently doing back in the past couple of years, like the website, Facebook press releases, what would you say is your top three that you spend most of your time? That's a huge list.
I don't know that I can give you the top three, because every day is so different. If there is a breaking news event, I may spend all day dealing with the media, dealing with press releases, dealing with that interaction, correcting information, accessing additional information if they need it. Whereas if there isn't something like that going on, it can be updating the website, it can be working on a larger project. So, I hate to, I hate to really give it three. The website is, as far as what's a big focus, if I don't have something pressing, breaking news, the website's always a focus, Facebook is always a focus. Those are, I mean, those are the two main ones, if there isn't anything pressing, pressing.
Do we have the, I'd mentioned a few council meetings ago about the electronic newsletter?
That is in future considerations.
That's good, I guess. And then, I like, I like your plan, I mean, I really do, I like the positive news, because that's something that I feel like we don't do enough of, positive things that our employees do, or like council does. But, I was wondering with the internal communication, and I like that, is if, you know, a lot of times, I'll find out information that the town's doing from the current, you know, when it's already been told, if you could, you know, items that you feel would benefit us, you know, if you could CC it to us, or send it to us, or we're the note prior to reading it in the paper, that'd be great.
Do you get the press releases that I send to council?
I don't know. I get a lot, I get a lot of different releases. We usually send one out, but I'm talking about the internal communication that you plan to unravel, I would take it, is that's interdepartmental communication, possibly things that you consider that would benefit us to know, from being the know. Not necessarily press releases, I believe you do a great job getting that out to us and sending that to the paper, but if the department does something good, or they're changing something, it'd be great to get it. Something typical that we wouldn't see, that would spark our interest, or just be a good thing to know.
Becky, I'd like to say that before you came on board, you know, different people commented to the paper and to the media, and I've noticed here that, you know, you always are there and you always have a comment, and I think it's good that the town of Christiansburg has someone like you and is a consistency, you know, and I just, I think you've done a nice job with that.
You know, we took it on the chin for several years because we did not have this position, and that term transparency, open communications, and all of those other terms that were thrown at us that we didn't seem to be doing the job as well as letting the public know. And, I believe that council's decision to put this position in our vision 2020 plan was one of the first actions that we took. I can't believe it's been two years, Becky, that you've been here, but we're beginning to lean more on Becky and rely more on her as far as getting information out. If you'll see the bulletins that come to you about town council activities, any meeting that takes place, usually Becky is the one who either posts those, I think that our clerk does a lot of that as well. But, it was a wise decision to hire Becky, and I like to see those press releases, because in the past, we hadn't done as much of that as we probably could have. I know the Police Department had their own Public Information Officer, and now he's relying more heavily on Becky to get the word out when there's a police issue to deal with, or a criminal issue to deal with.
I talked to Mark Sisson just in general conversation a couple of months ago, and he was telling me that, you know, when there's something breaking that happens, you know, Becky's there and she's there all day, and it's, you know, with what she is able to do, it's able to free up, he and his staff, to concentrate on what we pay them for, and that's to enforce the law and keep the town safe. So, you know, I think Mark will echo my comments, that you've been a welcome relief to a task that everybody wants the answer to something, but you have to pull a man off of what he's doing to do it, then maybe you missed something or you lose something in the thing. But, I've been very pleased, and I have, I've known for, you know, as Dicky said, that, I'm sorry, my honor said.
My honor.
My honor said that we have, we've been lacking for many years in being able to communicate, and we're, we're getting there. I think we all agree we're not there yet, but we're a whole lot better off now than we were two and a half years ago, two years ago when we started this thing. So, thank you.
Becky doesn't have any trouble filling up a day with work, and it looks like every time you turn around, you're giving her something to do, or asking her a question, and I, for one, Becky, appreciate it. She's been helping me with resolutions as well.
I was getting ready to slide that in, I think he's trying to slide in the resolution.
I've been calling on her for some assistance, and we'll continue to do that as long as she's willing to assist me with it.
Always. Thank you.
Any other comments to Ms. Wilburn? Thank you, Becky, you did a good job on the plan. And, we probably need to set a time when we can get together with Becky and let her give us some briefing on how we handle the press, how we respond to questions. And, I'm thinking maybe on April the third, which is a town council meeting, if we could come in at six-thirty and have about a forty-five minute session with Becky, and she can give us some pointers on how to deal with questions and some talking points and... Would you be willing to do that? Are you available on that night, Ms. Wilburn?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's schedule that. Mayor, if you will, please.
So, we're saying April third, six-thirty?
April third, if we could come in at six-thirty, that's about an hour early, and we'll give her time to give us a little briefing on things dealing with communications. We have with us this evening an old friend, one of the most dedicated employees we've had in Christiansburg for many years. He runs those fire calls, he's driven the fire truck, he's done just about everything imaginable that has to do with emergency services. Jimmy Everly, we're real pleased to have you with us this evening. We're gonna give you a chance to speak to us for a few minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm the member of the council. I don't have the voice there, do y'all?
No, no.
Okay, normally I can be heard pretty well, but I try to keep it down. It's been my honor to serve on this Montgomery County Combined Fire and Rescue Commission, as you remember, you appointed me, and I don't have time flies when you have fun, but it's got to be a couple of years, so maybe more. But, I really have enjoyed it, and I really want you to know that I'm honored to be able to have done that. And, there are people here that work for the town, the manager, Adam, being the CCR, we just had a gathering, and Adam started out with the computers at the firehouse, and I wasn't quite ready for computers yet, that's, how many, how long has that been?
Over five years.
How many?
Over five.
Well, I guess I was, Becky. But, maybe it's a breach that says it clearly. It's a pleasure to see you all and be welcomed when I come, and it's an honor for me to serve on that, and I hope I can continue to do that, if I do, to suit everybody. Well, not everybody, maybe it's a six or seven of y'all, but, and if I don't, I'm a phone call away, and I will fix it. I called today to talk to the manager, or yesterday, and the lady that answered the phone, who is that name?
Sharon.
She recognized me just like that, and was so kind to me, and you're coming in here tonight, people, so, so nice of them, and I appreciate it, and I thank you. I thought, Adam, Adam has really done good for us down at the firehouse, and that goes back all the way to when he started. Of course, the manager, he's been, I called him major dad, and he's helped me get my life straightened out a whole lot that nobody knows about, that just want me to thank. You're all valuable to the town, you've served the town well, I think it's a thankless job. I know there were a lot of times when I was fire chief, it was a very thankless job. And, I think our new guy, Billy Hanks, is really working hard, working hard, day and night, and that's part of it. But, he's keeping these folks happy, and he's accomplishing things, and really doing positive things, and he's, all the guys, everything's gonna be alright, there are no, no issues, and again, I just wanna come, I hadn't been one to report very much on the commission, because there hadn't been anything that we did get worked out before the fact that it was in the best interest of the fire department and of course the town. And, I'd be glad to field any, any questions or comments or criticisms if I have any, you know, give you a shot, and then I'm gonna beg the mayor's permission to leave, we have a meeting at the fire station, and I'm almost afraid not to go.
You must be afraid they'll elect you chief again. If you're gone, that's a good chance to get elected again, Jimmy, you know.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear yours.
I didn't say anything, but we thank you for everything you've done for us, Chief Everly. Chief Everly and I go back a few years, we worked together in the early sixties.
College scientists, yes, right. And, I miss what you said intentionally, wasn't it?
Yeah, intentionally, I think about, you have the convenient hearing, my wife suffers from that also, so it's good.
Do y'all have any questions of Chief Everly?
No. Thank you, if you'll.
Appreciate you, Chief.
Thank you. What you do, and you having any trouble with your stove?
No, it's still unused.
Thank you, Chief, for coming before us, we appreciate you very much, the leadership being provided, thanks for what y'all do for the town, I really, really, really thank This is a time of our meeting where we hear from citizens. Is there anyone here that would like to address council on any matter? Where's our folks tonight, there? Did we make them mad last night?
I think with Brad not being here.
Yeah, all the controversy's going out of town.
Okay, we'll close the citizens' hearing portion then, if there's no one that would like to speak to us, and move right on on their agenda, a report by Kelso and Mover on the Recreation Advisory Commission and their review of recommendation on age limits.
Yeah, this came about several months ago, and we've kind of been looking at it, and I have talked pretty extensively with Charlton and his staff, met with our new rec director last night, and we discussed this thing in length, and really, the rec department, since they don't really have that big of a problem, I think the complaint we had came from a grandparent who complained that her children had to walk home from the rec center on area town that didn't have a sidewalk and was not well-lit. Well, that's really not a recreation department thing, but the consensus of the staff is that they don't see any need at this point to change that age limit, any, go up any higher than eight, that they have a pretty good control, they've got a pretty good system, they've got a lot of cameras around that can watch these kids. And, you know, one of my concerns when I addressed them was, well, you know, what happens, you know, when the center closes? And, they've assured me that they do not leave until a child has been picked up or the parents have been called and come to get them. I talked to a friend of mine at Radford, Kenny Goodyear, the rec director, and we talked about this thing, and he said, well, we have a pretty standard policy that if the children have not been picked up by the time we close the center, that we call the Police Department, and they take them home, which, not under arrest, but that's kind of a burden I don't think we want to get involved with. Several of our... And several of our, one of the ladies on the rec commission works in juvenile probation and the other is social, was a former social worker, and they both just cringed when we said something about putting them in the car with a police officer and taking them home. They said, that, that isn't right. But what Redford tries to do is that if they close by 10 o'clock, then they, these unattended children have to be out of the building two hours prior to, so they start the calling process. And I, I brought all these up and I, and, you know, I really would like, and I talked to, as I said, I talked to Brad Everly last night at length about it. I'd really like to give Brad some time to review everything and see what he thinks, but he says, you know, that's a problem, that anytime you've got a recreation center facility anywhere, you're going to get these kids. And, and we're not, I'm not aware of, nor is the staff aware of any problems that have occurred, there's been no damage that they can attribute to these children. So, at this time, they want to, they want to keep it as it is and I ask that we readdress this with Brad in about six months, once he's had a full time to get his feet on the ground. So, the, the recommendation from the advisory commission is, based on what we've been assured by the rec department, is we don't need to change this.
So, right now, the current rule is that an eight-year-old can be unattended at the rec center for extended amounts of times?
Correct.
Is, is there a written procedure that defines that for the parents and those type of things, so they know what the ground rules are?
I think there is, there has been, but again, they, they have a, and in order to go in there, they have to be a member of the rec center, so there is a card on file and committed numbers on file for all, all of the guardians and parents. I will personally say I don't think it's a good age limit, but, you know, I'm not there day in and day out to see. And they say that, you know, for the most part, most of the time, they see these kids on the weekend for, for given lengths of time. But I'm, I'm going to, and the commission has decided that we would act on their recommendation to leave it at this point with reviewing it in six months.
Wasn't it unanimous, because how this came about was I attended the rec center commission and one of the staff members had mentioned it and mentioned the scenario about the, the, I believe it was an eight-year-old child walking home and the liability, which it is a liability, you can't say, you know, we closed, we waited around, obviously this, this child was put out and walked home, whether, it was, if something had happened to them. In my, you know, my personal opinion, that, that's a large case that could be brought against the town.
Well, I don't know.
We put a lot of pressure on our staff to, even for 13 and, you know, eight to 13, even if we moved it up to 13, there's a lot of pressure on the staff to keep up with these elementary age kids. I mean, my daughter's nine, I can't imagine her just driving up to a, you know, the rec center, dropping her off. I was trying to, my point in, when it was mentioned is to help them out. I mean, it doesn't have to be a parent, but an adult guardian or a coach could be out there, as long as there's somebody there watching kids besides our staff. And we're talking about 13 down to eight, that was my biggest concern with that. And I thought, I thought a lot of the commission was concerned with.
There, there was some concern initially and I, and I wasn't at that meeting, but I wasn't under the impression in my discussions and, and what I heard was that the child had been physically put out when we closed. Grandparent was just mad, was, and, and one of the, one of the commission members corrected me last month that, no, it wasn't a complaint for that, it was the fact that the child walked home, no sidewalk, no street light. And it weren't, I don't, I didn't get it that there was a complaint that, that the child was put out of the building and made to walk home by himself. We did not vote per se to it, but it was a, a head nod around the table, recommendation is we, we leave it as it is with, with Brad to take a look at it within six months.
Yeah, I guess the, what Becky said with the strategic initiative here about being proactive instead of reactive, this kind of resonates with me with this. I agree with Mike, we've got a new rec director, I think that individual needs to have some time to determine these things for himself. That being the case, I also agree with Mike that in my gut, eight years old, my goodness, we're talking about calling the police department to take the child home, frankly, I'd be calling the SS to come by and investigate the situation if the child's left unattended like that. I mean, I'm thinking eight-year-olds, someone like that, I, I can't imagine. I guess the only concern I have, and, and I'm completely prepared to accept the recommendation by the, by the commission and, and let Brad have, have a shot at this for a while, but, you know, we, there's going to be a bit of a backlash from some parents frankly, if we go, if we raise that limit. I don't mind being the person that gets those nasty phone calls, better than the commission. And if we can be proactive and try to, I just don't want us to be in six months looking back saying, man, had an opportunity to do something and then here we go, we had an eight-year-old kid inside of the bathroom at closing time and next thing we know we got a missing person and kids in the, you know, inside, I don't know if everybody's checking every room, I don't know what happened at close, I'm sure they probably do.
I think they have.
I'm sure they probably do.
And I guess, you know, with this, with this, part of these press releases or part of these items that we put out to the birds and, and, and I'm not opposed to going back to Brad and Charlton and asking that, you know, that they send a notice home with these children, that, you know, they must be picked up by a certain time. Now, they, I'd like the two hours ahead of time that they needed to be out, because that center's open till what?
10 o'clock.
Yeah, they don't need to be out past eight, huh? But, again, I'd...
I'll tell you though, Mike, in my gut, eight, eight years old, I can't imagine that year old being unattended.
Well, you'd be surprised at the number of parents who will drop a child off and say, I'll pick you up when the activity's over, I'll pick you up at closing time. 10 o'clock closing time is too late for an eight-year-old. That child should have been picked up two hours ago. But Mr. Turner and I have lived with this for many years, with school activities, parents bring a child to a ballgame and say, I'll pick you up when the ballgame's over, well, the ballgame's over and the child's still there and we're still looking for a parent to pick them up. And it, it is a concern, but I think with the recreation program, the way they're organized there, if, if this is a problem that's not broken, if it's a situation that's not broken, let's don't try to fix it until the new man comes on board and says, I need a little help with, in this area. But give him a chance to look at the age limitation. I, I think one of the biggest problems we've had is age limitations on participation in programs. We probably get more controversy over that than anything else. I think in the handbook that is published by the rec department, there should be a statement, if there isn't already one in there, that the expectation is that young children will be picked up prior to closing time.
I, I agree, there needs to be some type of written thing that's shared with the parents. In addition, I wouldn't have a problem with just posting something there to remind people when you bring your kids in, that, you know, pick up time for an eight-year-old or younger is...
I wouldn't put the, or younger, or younger, changing business.
Huh?
I wouldn't put that.
Well, yeah, I agree.
We're getting an offer changing.
Yeah, I agree too. But the age limit for the eight-year-old, kind of pick up the eight-year-old is such a...
It kind of goes back to one of the things that Becky said earlier about how to, you know, try to get into the school system, some of these things, and maybe that's where we need to go with this, through the school system, that, you know, there's certain expectations that these children be picked up two hours prior to closing.
It's got to be up at the rec center.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, it, it gets into this communication thing again is, and, and I...
The rec center, I mean, the school board and the school administration, for the examples the mayor talked about, I mean, that, they can make that decision. The rec center, we can make that decision if, if the, and I was hoping that the commission would come back with some sort of decision to at least increase it. I mean, ideally, I, I like the 13 and we mentioned 12, but, I mean, and it, you know, I'm willing to be patient and wait, but I'd like it to be a little bit less than six months. I know Brad has enough experience with Salem and things that I'd mention, and again, I'm not talking about the parent has to be right there with the child as long as it's a guardian or a coach.
Well, I think that's...
And, and the responsibility falls on them. I just think it's a lot of responsibility to put on your staff to keep up, because even if the child leaves, shows that, they drop him off and he decides, well, you know, I'm going to walk across to McDonald's, it's not closed, it's 5:00 and you, we all know what kind of road that is and the problem we, we've had with, we had an individual.
They was trying to...
I'd rather not wait for something like that to happen and the liability fall and fingers start to be pointed and we take more of an initiative now, or at least have the, the rec commission make a recommendation to at least increase that age limit to where an adult or guardian or coach has to be. A coach, you know, you, you can have 13 eight-year-olds on you.
Yeah.
But at least somebody's there, at least keeping tabs.
Well, I don't think the intent of, of what we looked at was, it wasn't, it wasn't to say that you have to have a parent there with you all the time. It's those people that are, those kids that are just dropped off to go watch a ballgame, they're not participating in, under the supervision of a coach or, or something along those lines. It's, it's, it's more the, just the, the, the family's desiring some couple hours of babysitting length is what, what I looked at it.
Why don't we give the director three months to go through this? I agree with you, six months is a long time. Give him three months and let's bring it back up at that time to see what recommendations they have made. And, you know, if, if the recommendation stayed like it is, so be it, but anyway, they come back with a recommendation.
I will contact the rec director tomorrow and, and, and the commission members.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good approach. I, I can't understand why a parent would drop a child off to watch a ballgame if they're not participating in an organized activity where a coach is looking after them, where a staff member is responsible for them.
They've got to free their, or something like that. It happens, Dick.
It's free, it's free daycare, night care.
Absolutely. I mean, Mayor, you, you probably remember the sock hops from middle school.
Oh.
I can remember that, their parents supposed to pick up their kids at 10 o'clock or something like that and you're sitting there at 11:30. I mean, they don't even bat an eye when they come to pick up their kids.
They never apologize.
They just go, I mean, that's what this society we're dealing with, I'm sorry.
The police department thing ain't a bad idea.
I'll tell you what.
I know what happens, Jim.
I mean, if you, if you called the SS, they'd rather, they'd rather see police than the SS.
Steve, I understand.
If you're, if you're a sponsor, you have to be there.
But if we have a policy, I mean, that's, that's something I, I believe that can be enforced with a parent, you know, public relations plays a big key where, where increasing the age limit, you know, a, a child can be dropped off as long as there's somebody, it could be a friend of theirs that are meeting, but then that other parent takes responsibility, not the staff in the rec center.
I, I'll tell you that, it, still, I mean, it, there hasn't been anything yet and I just, an eight-year-old unattended for hours on them in a facility that large with multiple exits, you can't mind all those exits, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen. I mean, it's just, it's, we're very fortunate up in town so far, it's good staff we've got up there, but they shouldn't have to do that. Now, they're, they're reporting back to the commission that there's no reason to change it because nothing's happened yet. And they're right, nothing has happened yet. But again, try to be proactive in the situation, an eight-year-old unattended, I, I just...
Well, I think by the discussion...
And it's not just the eight-year-old to worry about too, it's, I mean, some of the adults that are up there that have access to this facility.
But I don't think we can...
No, no, I'm saying, but they're all the most savory individuals all the time up there.
I, I think by this report and this discussion that we're being proactive here so that we want to head off a problem before a problem happens or an incident happens and, and giving a new man a chance to come in and observe for himself. I think it's good. Third, we're talking about 90 days.
Can we add that to our master list? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Barber.
Appreciate it, Mike.
Mr. Barber's been on that recreation commission for a long time and we appreciate his service.
Do you think there's a chance that Mr. Everly not to, to, just to introduce him to the community, have him come to one of these meetings, one of those...
He's scheduled for the next week.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, talking about recreation directors, you have before you a proclamation recommending some honor and recognition for Art Price who served as our recreation director for many years. I haven't fully researched his exact hiring dates and all of that, so we're going to fill that in, but if you'll take a look at this, the only correction I would make is says he's completed 29 years. Actually, as far as Virginia supplemental retirement, he has almost 31 years. He worked a year and a half or better in Louisa County. So, we'll probably just complete that, change that to that he's completed 30 years.
Well, you say special service to the town of Christiansburg, so, well, you covered it.
Well, it's to Christiansburg and the state of Virginia, I guess, so. Anyway, we haven't done anything for Art and I know that it's, you would want to express your appreciation to him for his years of service.
Is there plans to do anything?
Uh, yeah, the plan is to have him come and we'll present this proclamation to him.
How, how moving we go forward with the proclamation.
Before that, when we put the 30 years, can we put, and the state of Virginia?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, you need to do that.
Yeah, we can do that.
And Mayor, if you have trouble with this, we can always appoint Brad.
Yeah, Brad was right, of course.
I believe he did mention something to me.
Yeah. Things that are...
Since you've already got this one done, let's maybe do another one. Hopefully the men's high school state championship, the basketball, right?
Well, said earlier, Becky, Becky has helped me with this one and we'll go back and make sure we get these dates correct, years of service he had for us. We have a motion to...
But you have noted that we are supporting Brad the whole way on this, you know, we are behind him all the way.
But if we recognize the ball team, we're not going to recognize Brad. All in favor of approving the proclamation for Mr. Price, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Thank you, and we'll get that taken care of. And next week, we're going to have a presentation of resolutions to some of our individual state winners like the divers and some track kids, and we'll also invite Mr. Price to come for this proclamation as well. Third on the item is discussion setting the first council work session for the budget and the information that you have in front of you talks about a work session between March 21st and March 30th. And I've got a couple of dates identified that we might want to, to have a work session. Usually we take the off Tuesdays and the only off Tuesday we have after the 20th would be the 27th, that's the fifth Tuesday. Does it have to be between the 21st and the 27th or would we be prepared to say come in on the 13th or 14th? We have a finance committee meeting on the 16th. Finance committee, be prepared...
We'd probably be ready at the finance committee meeting that quick to, to have everything ready for...
So, you want to wait until after the finance committee meeting to...
I would think the 27th would be good.
Are you having a time though, Mr. Henderson, after the 27th? Would that be too early?
The 27th could be, okay.
Or we can come in on...
Well, it's 27th, all right.
What's mine though?
Fifth Tuesday?
Mm-hmm. I mean, that first work session.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
First work session.
Fifth Tuesday.
Fifth Tuesday. Is that the fifth Tuesday? How long, how many the fifth Tuesday?
No, it's the fourth.
Fourth Tuesday.
Typically, a work session is when we're presenting the budget, so.
That's all right. It's not that.
Have yet, are we going to get that early before that or will we get it that day? Because it's a pretty short work session for general questions and memory serves.
Probably, yeah, we probably have...
If the finance committee is meeting on the 16th, would we be prepared to get something in the hands of council within the next week?
Yeah, sometime that week. Is that the 16th, isn't that a Friday?
Yes.
Yeah, sometime that following week we'll have something else.
The 19th through the 20th, the 3rd.
So, we don't have to meet on a Tuesday, we can meet on a Wednesday if you want to, or we can meet on a Monday. We can just sort of, Tuesday seems to be our night, if it's a off night, it's a good time to meet. So you tell me what you want us to do. Now, we're going to have to set the public hearing on... Now, we're going to have to set the public hearing on the budget on March twentieth, and that is our next council meeting.
That was, I want to set the public hearing at night for the seventeenth of April.
Yeah.
This is a timeline of all the way up to approval. And there's room between the public hearing on the seventeenth and the fifteenth if we'll have another work session.
So it means we'd be, we'd be setting a public hearing date.
I think we ought to go with March the twenty-seventh. That'd give some time to have the finance committee meeting, get things together.
Is that general consensus, I believe? Becky, if you could put that on the announcements for public consumption.
I think the rest of the schedule looks reasonable.
We have, uh, April the tenth for another budget work session. April tenth would be the second Tuesday.
Yes, Mayor, on the thing on the twenty-seventh, we're going in a normal seven-thirty or seven or?
Probably won't be the very long meeting, will it? Probably, if y'all want to go earlier, I, I'll do whatever y'all want to do. If we can go early, it'd be nice.
I just didn't go early.
You want to make it seven o'clock?
Yeah, even six if y'all want to.
I was thinking six, Mayor.
You make it six.
I knew you were gonna, you were gonna give pizza, that's what I'm saying.
We can get a free meal out of that.
I'm not gonna feed you.
That's what it is. That's what you schedule them so late.
Sorry, boys, it's not in the budget.
I'll, I'll do whatever you want to do. You want to?
The earlier the better.
Just make it six o'clock.
All right, we'll grab an early bite before you get here.
And more whey biscuits for us, huh?
Well, Becky started that the last time, bringing this stuff in your house.
You spool on this, Becky.
Okay, then circle that date then, the tenth of April, and we'll come early at six. And how about on the twenty-seventh? You want to come early that day?
I thought the twenty-seventh was longer than the twenty- We talked about the twenty-seventh.
I thought it was the six P M. on the tenth of April as well.
That'd be fine.
Right. Do six P M. on both those dates?
Yeah.
All right. We'll come in early if you'll promise me we'll get out early.
You'll get out early, then you wouldn't be trying to say anything.
We're already on our jump, Mark.
Okay. And I, somebody mentioned the time, let's not forget this weekend, we're gonna, three o'clock tomorrow, right?
We just gotta worry about that for some.
Okay. Anything else on that, Mr. Helms, we need clarified?
No, sir.
Dates?
I, I like this, by the way, uh, having a schedule like this other than previous years. So kudos to whoever put that together.
I didn't do it, but if you want to give me credit for it, I'd be glad to.
I was also gonna recommend Becky do a follow-up for public relations on the seventeenth as well.
All right. Next on the agenda is something's been hanging, and that's the appointment of a planning commission member. Uh, we put this off the last time pending, uh, information on the background check. Since then, uh, we've had some communication with the candidate. He was a little reluctant to get us social security number so we could do the background check. And, uh, he kind of verbally stated to Mr. Wingfield his, uh, his disapproval of the way we handled, what way we handle appointments. In fact, almost to the point of rudeness. And, uh, then he had a conversation with our secretary and she got the same treatment. And, uh, I don't know whether you want to go ahead and proceed with this or whether you want to table it, pending more information on this candidate or?
And I just, personally, I just think we go with the two we've appointed and not worry about this third person. If he's, if he's gonna be hesitant to share information that we need in order to confirm him, then I don't think we need to go any further.
He did finally provide his social security number, so.
Were there any flags or anything?
No.
Nothing on our, uh?
No.
With all city commission members?
No.
So how many we have? Nine rise up right now?
Eight.
I think it's eight.
We have nine, yes.
Nine with the appointment of the-
Because we appointed one, well, we, we have one unfulfilled term to-
That's what this gentleman would be feeling, that unfulfilled term.
How long was that fulfilled term?
Two.
Two years.
If you want to move forward and go in and prove him, it's, that's the two-year term.
I, I just assume we stick with what we've got right now. We've got nine and, uh, just go with that and, uh?
That, that nine includes Craig, correct? That's the chair?
Yes.
Okay. And double to my left, Steve?
And the phone to your left.
Good old what's his name?
We, uh, we had said that this, this candidate would be the, would fill the unexpired term. If you want to go ahead with appointing, uh, with the understanding, we'll have two years to work with him. Are, are we on shaky grounds here, Mr. Attorney?
Not yet.
Do we, do we need to go into a closed session to discuss this further?
You're getting pretty close to that, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. You ready to cut it off? Five minutes, all right? We can table it?
I'd like to go into closed session for whatever the purpose to discuss this thing.
Okay. One second then, if you need a second to do it.
We have a motion to go into closed session, and that's under Article such and such of Virginia State Code.
Can I make a comment on that before we go into closed session? If, I really, when we're looking at planning commission members, I would like to have a full member of council when we're looking into that. Maybe we should table this till Brad comes back and then we'll close session next meeting.
I think that would be fine. That would be fine.
I don't have any problem with it tonight if it's what the council wishes, but I don't think Brad would have a right to be hurt on this as well. It affects all of us.
Yeah, it's not gonna hurt us to table it, but, okay.
I mean, at this point now, everything's been delivered that needs to be delivered.
Can I get a withdrawal at the end of the motion to go into closed session?
And you know, no, it might be good to have Randy Wingfield here too if we're gonna do that, you know?
Yeah, I think Randy needs to be here to give us some personal information.
He's given me some of the, you know, as you're-
I want to request a closed session next week, or next meeting, talk about, uh, purchase of property.
And we can do them both.
You know, Your Honor, at this point, I might want to withdraw my motion. I'm not asking, I'm not asking that we make a decision, but I, I would like to trust to, to, uh, go into closed session to discuss this further.
We have a second.
I'll withdraw that.
You're gonna withdraw your second, then we do have, do we have a second to Mr. Barber's motion? Go in once, go in twice, no second, no motion, okay? Mr. Town Manager?
Have a copy of the bills. Any questions, I'll try to answer them. I'll get an answer for you.
Mayor, I just have one. You probably don't know the answer and it could be a typo, but I was looking for one. The, uh, and Becky, if you know, please tell me, but the words print for the, uh, garbage cards and loads, the maps is what caught my eye. And that's part of the detail. And I know we're going through Old, Old Town?
Old Town.
For those. Is this a different type of map or is it just accidentally?
I have a number of words print, could be, could be town maps. The full Christiansburg maps.
Okay.
That are out of the engineering term.
So our, our map is not on the budget right now, is it? I mean, I'm, I'm-
We haven't got a bill yet on-
Okay, we haven't been built yet.
We haven't got the map yet.
I had one question about Big Bill. On page three, train ten thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars repaired in at the Aquatics Center. Is that part of the planned maintenance or was that just something that came up or?
His, his train, um, won the heat last weekend or we can, during ACC's, one of the, uh, heat exchangers are having problems with it. And I think that's to repair that. But I'll check and let everybody know.
And just carries, you know?
They may have some problems, some of the units.
I just wonder what kind of warranty we might be under and things like that.
One year.
Was it one year?
And Barry, could you find out, it's on page four, uh, goes water, uh, working water, the repair U V chamber at Aquatics. But if that was-
That was for, uh, it was a fitting that cracked. It had to, cost us much to get it here in a hurry. It's the part cost.
Gotcha.
And they had to replace it. It's special one and you're gonna get a few licenses.
And we need to change the tape, so let's hold everything until our technician gets that taken care of. Okay, any other question on the bills?
I'm moving to pay the bills.
Got a motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Motion and a second to pay the bills. Any further discussion? All in favor of paying the bills, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Mr. Helms, you and Miss Tweedy, pay the bills.
At three public hearings, I recommend set on the seventeenth of April. One is the council's intention to adopt ordinance in regards to rezoning request by Radford and Radford Properties LLC for three twenty-five following branch road, uh, from R two to R three. Then contingent on that one, condition use permit request by Radford and Radford Properties for multi-family residential use of three twenty-five following branch road. That would then be in the B three general business district if the first one passes. And then the last one, condition use permit, uh, request by Cook's Auto Upgrades for automobile upholstery shop at five seventy-five North Franklin Street in the B three general business district. And that's where the car lot used to be next to, uh, C V S.
Moran, yeah, Moran's Place, whatever it was, yeah, okay.
Right there at the corner of Betty, or, uh, Sarah Drive, I believe is Sarah, in North Franklin. So I recommend setting those for April seventeenth.
To move?
Second.
Motion and a second to hold those two public hearings on April, the three public hearings on April seventeenth. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We're gonna go ahead and schedule those.
Had a request, uh, from Chrisburg High School for assistance in T V-ing some of their storm drains under their practice field. It's not a field that we normally use for parks and rec. It was, I just say, yeah, go ahead and do it. But if there's not any objections, I would, I'd like to help them T V their storm drains. So if they, to see if they need repair, they don't have the capability of doing it.
Let's run a little robot in there and take a gander at it.
I think it'd be a good neighbor policy, so to speak. Good P R.
Okay, last meeting, he asked me to notify the property owners adjoining eight Radford Street on the, um, state office is going to go in there on probation. I did, we did send a letter out to all the adjoining property owners. I talked with the, uh, representative of the state and he wanted a copy of everybody we sent notices to because they only sent it out to about eight and we sent it to about fifteen or sixteen. And talked to him about the middle school being close by. He said they would take that into consideration. They don't have a specific distance. But they look at, you know, what kind of roads between, there's four-lane divided highway between. That's better than two-lane street, but they take that into account. They're looking at several locations. He said because of the time delay in getting a lease, they had, they'd look at several in case there was problems with one, they had other options. They were not aware the school was that close or he wasn't, and he said they'd take that into consideration. I have a feeling it's going somewhere else, but I can't, he didn't say that, but.
Sounds like.
Yeah.
I discussed that with a friend of mine on the golf trip, who's a probation officer, and he was, did a little head scratching on the location when I mentioned it to him. We'll see what happens.
I'm going, um, there's a lady proposed to plant trees along Huckleberry Trail down near Corning. And in order to do that, we need to get, uh, secure an easement from Corning. Because we just have twenty-foot easement and most that's taking up the trail don't want to plant a tree that close to the trail. And Corning has given her their initial concurrence with granting an easement. And like, I'd like permission to go ahead and pursue that with Corning to, uh, get that. She's proposing to plant the trees and maintain it until they get big enough to take care of them, you know, not have to be watered and that kind of stuff.
Great.
That'd be good to know. Any motion to that effect, Mr.?
No one objects, and I'll see, I can do it. B T V monthly report was in council packet, on reminder of that. C P R training at the next meeting at six o'clock, uh, been proposed to kick off the recreation, uh, rescue squads. Take Har Christiansburg campaign, uh, is anyone, does anyone want to do that next meeting?
Probably.
Can I put you on the spot?
If we get a reminder, uh?
I think I ask you, uh, two weeks ago to be prepared to give us a response tonight if you could attend it.
At six P M. before next meeting?
Mayor, did you get my, I said I'll do it.
Yes, a couple of you responded. I just assumed all of you were gonna do it, but.
One is not long ago.
Wouldn't hurt, doesn't hurt, doesn't hurt to have a refresh of course.
All right, we'll let the rescue squad know that we'll be here at six o'clock on the next meeting.
If we have any spouses or anything that want to join in or leave, is that okay?
Obviously, why not?
If you can just let me know so that they can be prepared with enough stuff.
Enough dummies.
Well, we'll be here, so there's gotta be enough dummies.
I like Mike being, our spouses need to brush up on their C P Rs right now.
The goal of it is to also try to generate some media interest, so there may be some media present. Since we now have your confirmation, we can go ahead and try to pitch that to them, get them to show up. If nothing else, we'll be taking your picture and something can add after the fact.
Double, uh, and Mike won't be the dollar right here.
And last thing I have, Becky mentioned a ribbon cutting at the wastewater treatment plant coming up soon. We're working on scheduling and time for that and we'll get it out, plenty of time for everybody to know and.
Is that already up and running? Remember, you told us about that last year and all that. Is that already up and running?
Uh, they have some final work to do on the controls. They have ran it for three hours, but it doesn't cut off and all like it's supposed to. So as soon as they get that worked out, then, uh, we'll have the ribbon cutting and.
And that's one of the first around, is it not?
Uh, I think Abington has one. I believe they're putting one in in Roanoke or somewhere down Roanoke County or.
It'd be, you'd want that resource though.
Okay. So it's not unique, but it's still, hopefully cut our electric bill a little bit.
Not unique, but it's pretty darn good, huh?
Yeah.
Are you serving refreshment?
Uh, yes. D M M E would, uh, really wants to have a ribbon cutting and invite some of the state politicians and all of you. Uh, so, yes, we'll have some, some kind of refreshment.
I'm not sure I want refreshment. Boys don't eat brownies.
That's all I have, sir.
Give us a bottle of water.
What else, Mr. Helms?
That's awesome.
You should have, or either received or have in front of you an appreciation letter from the A C C or from Virginia Tech representing the A C C for the tournament that was held the last two weeks. Those folks were extremely pleased with the facility and with the overall cooperation of our staff. So we commend, uh, Ms. Caldwell and her staff on an excellent, excellent tournament. Anything else to come before?